Yeah, I'd like to call this meeting to order and I will take a motion to go into executive say.
Over.
Yes.
All in favor?
You get that. I'm giving that. That's it.
Citizens in the room.
What's that?
All right, so we need to make a motion to come back and get special.
Second.
All favor. All right.
We should wait just a second.
You want the motions to come on executive session, Heidi?
I've got them, so no worries.
It's my head, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, my goodness.
Okay, executive session. Minutes, approval of minutes from September five, twenty twenty three.
I'll move them. Second.
All favor. Appointment to recognition from resignations, set resignation treasurer Jacob right effective end of day October sixth.
Nope, none of us is a role.
Being held against your will.
We own you.
I really, really enjoy my time here. I appreciate all the trust that you and community and everyone, but I mean, I've enjoyed enjoying my time here. I appreciate everything.
I move acceptance with deep regret.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion about Jake?
I'm really gonna thank you.
All right. All in favor.
Scrying up sea spray.
Consent agenda, department reports, highway buildings and grounds, parks and seven perrys and solid waste police department. Investment committee minutes from May nine, twenty twenty three. Thank you letters from the American Red Cross Life Flight Foundation, MBI Community Campfire Coalition, and Neighborhood House.
Move acceptance of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Does anybody want to pull anything out? All favor. Select board reports. Any? Unfinished business, consider soliciting appointments to the comprehensive planning committee.
I think that's a good idea.
You have a list so far.
Oh, we've taken some.
Two people that have submitted their names for later. I believe Katrina and the other one just flew right out of me.
Jerry?
Eric?
Someone's been.
No, he didn't submit to me.
I think he's still active, isn't he?
I hope so.
Yeah, I think he's still on the subcommittee there that's working on that, so.
What's the commitment for people?
It's not going to be a full rewrite. It shouldn't be as bad as the conference plans. I couldn't guarantee the schedule, but it's going to be, you know, like probably once, once or twice a month, depending on what is possibly depending.
For how long?
Probably three, four, five months maybe. Again, I'm guessing because I haven't been to that, but it isn't a thing like you would have to be before it begins or whatever.
We could hope they complete their work and review by town meeting on the first of May anyway.
I might consider it.
Get together a committee.
I might consider it. Depending on who else is, you know, there's, we're having trouble finding people.
Gallows sometimes can be difficult positions because people just aren't familiar with Congress and what does that mean? Try to get them interested, maybe they understood what it meant.
If we put, if we put a, um, like that, press release out or anything.
Yes, sure.
Yeah.
You'll get a hunch of that. So.
We could have some people from different villages.
Yeah.
It's new people too. They've never been involved.
Yeah.
Some of those people.
A lot of people have a lot of opinions.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd agree. We'll get some people there maybe. So I would move consideration and solicitation plan for the appointments to the comprehensive committee. And we should probably set a timeline for implementation of a solicitation plan. As such, uh, being advertising in the paper or however, we're going to get the word out that we need volunteers for a review and not a complete rewrite. Right. You're going to the Zoom meeting tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Why don't you mention that to Noel too, because I think he was, he's going to be chair, not chairing that, and he's going to be the consultant for that. So he's probably, uh, will be putting some ads on and stuff like that as well. Put that on his radar. At least he can be a good technical assistant too. I wish I could go over and have a root canal instead. I thought that would be more fun.
Neither one's the same.
Yeah.
Okay, we got, you made a motion, Rick.
I don't have a second. I don't have a second.
Yeah, all in favor. Great.
I got something for Claire. Megan Bailey was one of the people that.
That's it. That's the name.
Okay, there wasn't.
That I knew, I, it just went out of my head.
Bailey, Bailey, yeah.
She's on the, uh, economic development.
Yeah.
She's younger.
And she's got a degree in, in urban planning or something.
Yeah, she would be good.
So how many people are you looking for for this committee?
Get as many as you can. I mean, who asked of Jerry or whatever, how many people generally serve what was? I think it's a pretty broad spectrum. I think it was ten to twelve last time we did the poll. And some of the people unfortunately that were on the comprehensive planning committee passed away or leave early terms. You know, you need to reconstitute that former committee in its entirety.
All right. Review proposals quotes from solicitation for a ladder maturity portfolio of CDs, treasury bonds, U.S. government agency obligation, and or similar investments for five million to a million dollar initial investment after substantial tax collection in fiscal year twenty twenty four. Consider reallocation of the funds.
All right. So this is a long time coming. I think this was authorized back in June. And we were simply waiting for it to end tax collection when we had the opportunity to go forward with this. So, we solicited proposals, um, thinking that we were going to be looking to tie up, uh, that money for a certain period of time and have it come back into operations as it's way to capture the needs become, uh, you know, present themselves. Um, but if you'll notice, uh, towards the top, there's a category described as ICS that's insured cash week, um, which is completely liquid money. And, um, I was very pleased to see the rates that we, we got, um, on that liquid money. And at this time I'm recommending, um, so the, the money in question, five million dollars operating funds. We keep that with our Harvard Bank and Trust, um, which probably explains why, you know, their, uh, ICS, uh, proposal is so, uh, competitive. Um, what they're proposing is five point two five percent on a new ICS account that would house the five million dollars. And four point two five percent on our existing ICS funds for operating, um, operating ICS, um, which currently has three point eight five percent. So in, so you're getting essentially treasury rates on liquid money for the five million that we were going after in, uh, in combination with a pretty big increase in our ICS rates on, uh, funds that were outside of the scope of what we were really looking for. And so it, it, it's kind of a, a dual win in that regard. Um, but I'm happy to talk about any of the other categories. Um, this, this often requires the least amount of administration because it keeps everything where it is. And, and there, like I said, there would be a new ICS account, but, um, it would be kind of like having just another, another money market where we would put money back into operations as the need presents itself. Um, but this five point two five percent would actually exceed the existing money market account rate that we have with First National Bank at four point two eight percent. So we would probably want to prioritize pulling money from the money market prior to the ICS and in this regard. Uh, but either way, it's all liquid money and essentially treasury and CD rates. So it's very exciting.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
So that would be my recommendation is that we accept Barbara Bank and Trust offer five point two five percent on the new ICS account for an amount with an initial investment of five hundred dollars. And, um, great, you know, say thank you to increasing the, uh, existing offering ICS from three point eight five percent to four point two five percent.
As expressed by our finance director, I still move.
Second it.
All favor.
This is Jeremy, that's what we do. I want to thank Jake and.
Just finish your vote.
Sorry?
We just need to finish our vote.
I, I understand.
You stand, okay, go ahead.
So I want to thank Jake and the investment committee, you know, our recommendation was to go back to Barbara Bank and Trust where we already have a relationship. And we also have a very good relationship with First National. We did look at all the local banks and First National, it's, it, with our recommendation, the committee for, uh, Barbara Bank and Trust exceeded anything we saw from any of the other banks. So we're really quite fortunate. You got a very valuable body for, you know, liquid money. There's normally this city, right, Jake?
Well, and like I said, we, it was invested at three point eight five percent. Um, but, you know, we'll be able to bring a world of additional revenue into the, into the town this way. Without any of the risk of blocking every money. But that's what makes it really exciting.
Okay. Anything else on that? New business. Consideration of proposed breaking the silence of convention abuse mode proclamation.
With that.
That is the table. We need to table that till the next meeting, October second. She was not able to attend.
Okay.
I was saying.
Yes.
Just keep.
You mean, why start?
Oh, yeah. She has a sick child, so she's, I need to come. We'll just push that. She said bye and push it to the next meeting.
Item B, request liquor license extension through October twelve, twenty twenty three. Ask incorporation doing businesses asked to go in.
So just a little, little bit of background, um, they are not reapplying for their liquor license as they normally would because it's changing ownership. So what they want to do is just extend the current one for like in three or four weeks. And then they will reapply under the new owners and then it'll be a whole public hearing thing and all that. And they, they get permission from the state. They contacted the state liquor.
Makes sense.
Move authorization of the request.
Second.
All favor. Consider deactivating the village center planning committee.
Okay, so, you know, the project is now complete. You don't see the end role anymore. I think you should deactivate that, just get that off the books.
I'll move it.
Second.
All favor. Request authorization for superintendent Jacob to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the town to purchase a new, Ram fifteen hundred crew cab four by four truck from Darlings in Ellsworth at their bid of forty five thousand nine hundred eighty seven dollars using funds from Public Works Equipment Reserve account four zero five zero one zero zero dash two four five two four five zero zero with an unencumbered balance of approximately three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars and ninety nine cents as of August thirty one, thirty, uh, twenty twenty three.
Move authorization.
Second.
All favor. Consider authorizing public works director Brian Hinkle to sign that's be documents for the use of twenty five thousand two hundred fifty dollars in the wastewater capital reserve account. Four oh five oh five zero zero dash two four five zero one with a current unencumbered balance of approximately one hundred and twenty four thousand, seven hundred and forty four dollars. And twenty five thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty four appropriations budget line sewer inspection services. Number one, five, five, zero, five, five, two, dash, five, four, five, three, zero. For a total amount of fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to fund fourth year of Vortex Company's five year plan to video inspect, clean, and GIS map the town's sanitary sewer collection.
Move authorization.
Second.
All favor. Consider amendment to section eight point six point one of the town's current personnel policy entitled sick leave as described in a memo from finance director Jake Bright.
I'll move it.
Okay.
All good.
Did I say?
No, you can.
Okay, I, sorry.
Got it. Okay. Consider amendment to section six point four of the town's current personnel policy entitled comments glory times as described in memo from finance director Jake Bright.
With approval.
Second.
All favor. Review of draft budget development schedule.
You see that? It's time to start.
Yeah, great.
Very much the same. Same as last year, pretty much the time for you.
One thing I did want to bring to your attention because we started seeing the forms that they are ready for the website for the third party request. Um, did you want to, I thought last year you didn't want to do the two meetings that week of, um, what break that is in February.
President's week.
President, yeah, president's week. And also I thought maybe if we're moving more to an MOU status that if the list would be shorter. So maybe you just want to do them all in one night instead of splitting them into two. Just thoughts for you to consider.
Okay, we'll think about it.
Good. Last year we, it was sort of a trial version of, of, of few organizations on MOU status and we were gonna see how we felt about that and potentially add a couple more.
Yeah. More to do the product.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to consider.
Other than that, it's pretty much the standard procedure.
Do you think it was, it's wise to stay away? There's three of us here that are employed by public schools. Not that that's a, that's a, but scheduling two meetings a week of a break is probably a bad idea.
Yeah.
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 So it does, because I, I can help it. I will not be here.
Also, people who are attending those meetings will be around either.
Well, that's a good point too.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. So we can all think about that. We need a.
No, this would just be your information, so you don't need to have anything yet.
Thanks.
Hey, anything else on that? Jeez, all right. Other business, any other business?
I would just like to publicly thank like the fire department, police department, the wastewater guys and the public works for this past weekend. I know how much time some of them put in and we are blessed. So on behalf of me, but the board, thank you guys and pass that along because it was some long hours. Lot of trucks running up the manor roads. Lot of water.
Well, I can't wait till this thing opens up and then every siren that comes out of the front starts to go by my house. That's right. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. It's something, yeah. It's been, it's been noticeable. So just remember, yeah. Right, it's good. I mean.
We're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I think we are. Yeah.
Yeah, I've noticed this year it's been very quiet compared to the last.
Yeah, you don't have so many sirens down here.
I can hear them.
Just wait.
So it's been very few comparatively. So next year.
It's another year. The phone will be ringing down here. Is it people complaining about the sirens?
Any other business? Nope. Treasurer's warrants. Okay, approval and signature. Town invoices AP twenty four seventeen and AP twenty four eighteen in the amount of one million, eight hundred and forty eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy seven dollars and fifty nine cents.
Move approval.
Second.
All favor.
And signature, I guess.
Approval for signatures, uh, state fees and payroll benefits, AP twenty four fifteen, AP twenty four sixteen, and PR twenty four oh seven in the amount of two hundred and forty two thousand, five hundred and eighty eight dollars and twenty nine cents.
Moving people. Second.
All favor.
One abstention.
Acknowledgement. School invoices, AP three, school payroll, PR six, avoided disperse, dispersments being twenty four oh one. In the net, in the net amount of four hundred forty six thousand, two hundred four dollars and twenty two cents.
Acknowledgement. Second.
All favor. Lots of good dirt.
The rule, second.
Favor.